This is a quorum call of the City Council. If council members could please report to the council chambers. It is six minutes after ten. This is a first quorum call of the City Council. Council members, could you please report to the council chambers?
Bernsen, Chick, Fier, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Causi, Pajecob, Dier, Riley, Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good morning, everyone. This is a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles on this Wednesday, the seventeenth of May in the year 2000. Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., Assistant Council President Pro Tem, serving as presiding officer today upon the arrival of Council President Ferraro or Council President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter. This council meeting can be viewed live on L.A. City View Channel Thirty-Five presently will be replayed tonight beginning at seven thirty and also on Sunday beginning at ten a.m. Madam Clerk, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, those are approved. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, those are approved.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue or receive and file. Item nineteen, the Housing Department has advised us, the council, that that can be -- matter can be received and filed.
Okay, without objection, item number nineteen will be received and filed.
And item number twenty, request to continue for one week to May twenty-fourth.
Without objection, item number twenty will be continued one week until May twenty-fourth.
Next item on the agenda, item notice for public hearing. Item number one, there are -- is an ordinance on the file. Do you wish to hold those for twelve members?
That would be fine and let us also hold it until the council member of the district can arrive. Next item?
Items two through ten are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Colleagues, we have items number two through ten before us. I have no cards. Public hearing has be held -- has been held. Are there any specials on items number two through ten? Three special by Mrs. Chick?
I'd like to ask a question about two. I'd like to ask a question about five.
Two and five special by Councilwoman Goldberg?
And I'd like to ask a question about eight.
And two, excuse me, two, five, and eight by Councilwoman Goldberg called special. Are there any other specials? Would anyone like to speak on any of the items not called special? Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the remaining items that have not been called special?
Eleven ayes.
Okay. That will be the order. Those items are approved. Fourth with on ten. Any other fourth widths? Okay. Next items, Madam Clerk.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items eleven through thirty-four.
Colleagues, we have items number eleven through thirty-four before us. Are there any specials?
You have ordinances on eleven and twelve.
Let us hold items eleven and twelve on the desk until we have twelve members present. Mr. Fuhrer, did you want to call item thirty special for a moment?
Are there cards, Rudy, on thirty?
I do not have any cards as of yet.
Yes, Mr. Fuhrer, thank you. Yes, we let -- let's keep -- hold thirty for a few minutes.
We'll hold thirty on the desk for the present.
Technical amendment for thirty-one D.
Okay. Councilwoman Goldberg, would you like to make that amendment right now on item thirty-one D?
The DOT cost is $5,142.
Okay. Let us show that item thirty-one D has been amended to reflect Councilwoman Goldberg's amendment. Are there any other specials other than item number thirty which we are holding on the desk at this time?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty -- twenty-nine? Twenty-nine by Mrs. Chick special?
To personnel committee.
Okay. Item number --
It's actually in the motion. I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
What we -- Councilwoman Goldberg, what we could do is assert jurisdiction then refer it to committee?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, let us call item number thirty-two.
That's actually what Mr. Ridley Thomas is asking.
Let's call item number thirty-two special for a moment, then we'll dispense with it after this block of specials.
And also twenty-seven, just so I can step out on twenty-seven.
Okay. Why don't we just called -- why don't we call number twenty-seven special? We'll take care of that after this group of specials also. Care, there's anyone else would like to speak on any of the items?
Mr. Thomas, you want to call thirty-four special for the purpose of commenting? Yes, special.
Okay. Item number thirty-four special also? Okay. Are there any other specials? Madam Clerk, what does that leave us?
Items -- well, you do have twelve members now, so eleven and twelve can be voted on.
Why don't we take the ordinances after this group of specials?
Well, eleven and twelve are included in that.
Okay, that would be fine.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one through twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-one, and thirty-three.
Okay, let us open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote. Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah. I just wanted on item twenty-one, I wanted to continue it one week if I could, Mr. President.
Okay. Without objection, let us reconsider item number twenty-one and continue it one week. That had not been sent forth with. Without objection, that'll be the order. Those items were just approved that we voted on. The ordinances, let us send forthwith which were items number eleven and twelve.
And forthwith on twenty-two through twenty-six.
Twenty-two to twenty-six forthwith. Are there any other forthwith, colleagues? Okay, next items.
You have closed session. You wish to hold those on the desk?
We'll hold that on the desk.
Item thirty-six is on the supplemental -- excuse me, on the continuation agenda. There's an ordinance.
Colleagues, we have number -- item number thirty-six on the supplemental agenda. That is an ordinance first consideration relative to the establishment of a special fund for the deposit expenditure of targeted destination ambulance fees. It's on the special.
Just a -- Mr. President, that's a matter we voted on yesterday, but we didn't have twelve people, so we have to do the ordinance.
Correct. Okay. Anyone like to speak on this item? Anyone like to call it special? Mr. Holden calls item number thirty-six special. Okay. Madam Clerk, let's go back to the other items.
Item number one was held on the desk. There's an ordinance and the council member of the district is present.
Present. Councilwoman Walters, would you like to move on item number one? Okay. Councilwoman of the district moves on item number one. It is an ordinance. I do not have any cards. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number one and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Councilwoman, would you like that to go forthwith? Forthwith on item number one. Next item?
Item number two called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, item number two called special by you.
Yeah, the one question I had is, is --
Push your button, please.
What's the difference, as it applies here, between prevailing wage and living wage?
Neil Drucker, Public Works Engineering. Prevailing wage is generally used for construction contracts and related. Living wage is used for service contracts and consulting contracts.
I know that. I know the definitions. The question, I guess I perhaps didn't ask it appropriately. Is there ever a point in time when prevailing wage is lower than the living wage?
No.
That's all I want to know. Thank you. No, usually, but there are some helpers and things like that at the bottom.
As far as I know, even at the lowest end of the salary scales for the construction trades, they're always higher than living wage.
Any other speaker on item number two? Saying none. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number two and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Councilwoman, would you like that to go forthwith? Forthwith on item number one. Next item?
Item number two called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, item number two called special by you.
Yeah, the one question I had is, is --
Push your button, please.
What's the difference, as it applies here, between prevailing wage and living wage?
Neil Drucker, Public Works Engineering. Prevailing wage is generally used for construction contracts and related. Living wage is used for service contracts and consulting contracts.
I know that. I know the definitions. The question, I guess I perhaps didn't ask it appropriately. Is there ever a point in time when prevailing wage is lower than the living wage?
No.
That's all I want to know. Thank you. No, usually, but there are some helpers and things like that at the bottom.
As far as I know, even at the lowest end of the salary scales for the construction trades, they're always higher than living wage.
Any other speaker on item number two? Saying none. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number two and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith on that item. Next item?
Item three called special by Councilmember Chick.
Councilwoman Chick, item number three.
Oh, okay, good. I wasn't sure, Mr. President, that we had department staff here, but colleagues, what we have before us, and I am going to support the committee recommendations because I feel we have no other choice, that what it's turned out this year for General Services' petroleum account for gassing city vehicles is going to be 9.9 million for this current fiscal year and that there was, I guess, a deficit of, what was the amount? One point seven?
One point six.
For the year?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm very aware, we all are unfortunately, of rising petroleum prices that are affecting the cost to the city. What I want to know is the following. In terms of the fuel tank consolidation program, how is that affecting the number of cars that are gassing up at commercial stations in the private sector rather than through city gasoline pumps where we get a better price? And what kind of monitoring and controls are in place that are effective, that are keeping a watchful eye that we're using as little petroleum as possible, particularly when we're having to gas up at commercial stations and the prices are so high? Because, colleagues, 9.9 million dollars for one year to put gasoline in cars. I'd like to know if we can lower that amount even despite the fact that gasoline prices have gone up. So if you could respond, please.
Yes, Bill Griggs from General Services. You're right, we did start using the Voyager cards, the commercial gas stations, when we were closing the tanks. At our peak, we were averaging about $50,000 a month in Voyager costs for the vehicles fueling on the commercial side. That has since declined to $30,000 a month in that vein. Yes.
And is $30,000 a month typical for that expense for the city?
No, I believe if we went back to the previous years, we'd show that we were running around $20,000 a month, so it is still slightly elevated. What we are doing is we are implementing a -- an automated fuel system throughout the city. When that is in place, we are going to recall all the Voyager cards and have very strict guidelines on the reissuance of them this fall once we complete.
When will -- when is the estimated completion now of that program?
I believe that's October.
And are you pulling in some of the cards for employees who aren't working at places where now they can set up through the city because those fuel tanks have gone through the program?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
Thank you.
If you could repeat the answer to your first -- to the first question, one of our colleagues did not hear the answer, and if you could, we would appreciate it. Councilwoman Walters? Councilwoman? He has the answer to the first question for you.
Yes, I couldn't hear your response to the first question, so I wanted you to repeat it, if you would, please.
Yes, ma'am. We spend about $50,000 a month at the peak of when the tanks were being replaced in our commercial fuel costs through the Voyager system, which is a state contract that we wrote off of. It has declined to about $30,000 a month, and previous to the tank replacement project, we were averaging about $20,000 a month commercially.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
My understanding is gas prices continue to fluctuate and that the anticipated increase of gas prices for, let's say, the summer months is not happening because they were already at a high, so they're going down. Is that correct?
That is correct. They peaked so high that now they have continued to come down from the March high, the April high.
I just -- because we were talking as it's going up. No, and I just --
Right.
I just know what I'm seeing. And now that we get to buy gas with a Voyager card, we get to see those prices fluctuate, so we should be more aware. so we should be more aware of what that cost of fuel is. And then, in the old days, we used to be able to fill, let's say, here, but then if we purchased gas at a gas station because we had to, because of what we were already got, how much did it cost us to reimburse that process?
Reimburse, I'm not quite sure I understand the question.
Yeah, if we didn't have a Voyager card.
But, yeah, previous to the Voyager cards, we had contracts with Exxon and Shell and those type of things. We've replaced them with a state contract.
Right. I just wanted to kind of, I don't want it just to make certain assumptions, I think that we want to do an analysis of what's the best system for purchasing fuel, and I didn't know if we could have a con— Is it possible to set a price for the petroleum company for the purchase price of our fuel? Let's say to be for a year, whether it goes up and down?
We have tried that in the past, and they will not do that.
They will not do that.
Typically, you fix the prices for the, for the product we purchase through the OPUS index, and we get discounts off the OPUS index.
And I guess part of what I didn't want to get caught up on is an administrative process that costs us much more than the difference of the cost of gas in trying to administer it. So again, and this is an important question, I just wanted to point out, the most important thing is I think that we might have reached our top on petroleum gases, at least for the next three months, and now look at a reduction, and at the same time, it's something that we should be monitoring on an ongoing basis.
Councilwoman Chik, in response to your question about how we monitor the Voyager consumption, every month we get an electronic file of every single transaction. We sort that by department, by council district, by all the departments, and we forward each individual charge to those departments, ask them to review all the charges, plus we annotate anything that might be suspicious, and ask them to report back and control their costs.
Very good. Are there any other council colleagues that would like to speak on this item? If not, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number three and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith.
Mr. President.
Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. In the midst of that item, we've been joined by Assembly Speaker Emeritus Viera Gosa, who's here on item 30 with a delegation. We could take 30 out of order, please.
Okay, without objection, colleagues, we are going to take item number 30 at this time, and the chair would like to recognize Councilman Fuhrer.
Do we not have speakers, Mr. President, on the item?
Yes, we do, Mr. Fuhrer.
I would move a brief public hearing to give the speakers an opportunity to be heard.
Very well. At this time, colleagues, we do have item number 30 before us, and it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce the first speaker, the Speaker Emeritus of the California State Assembly, the Honorable Antonio Villagorrosa. Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Council President, and thank all of you for your support. I'd also like to thank City Councilmember Mike Fuhrer for bringing AB 2000 to your attention. The support of the City of Los Angeles and the council of this city is, I think, very important support, and one that, in this city, more than any other in this state, is essential. After the shootings at the North Valley Community Center, Jewish Community Center, and the killing of Joseph Eletto, we brought together a group of civil rights leaders, many of them who are here today, some of whom were with us earlier at a press conference, and we asked them what they thought the state should do with respect to addressing the issue of human relations, promoting hope, harmony, and tolerance in our state, and they came up with the idea of the creation of a statewide human relations commission. So AB 2000 is the embodiment of the collective wisdom of some of the people who are working in the trenches, if you will, to connect this great city with, where we speak 144 languages and come from every corner of the world with our hopes and dreams. And so, your support for AB 2000 is, I think, welcomed, and I would hope that you would support it. With me are a number of people who'd like to provide some comments, and I'll let them speak on behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We do have a series of speaker cards, and I would like to invite the speakers to come forward to the podium as I call their name. What I would like to ask, in the interest of time, if, if they could limit their comments to a minute each, we have about 15 cards, and that will take us through the, the process. If you could do it less than a minute, terrific. First speaker, and I'll call them three at a time in order that they can queue behind the podium, Ismail Eletto, Michael Hirschfeld, Najee Ali, and Elizabeth Wong, if you can all be prepared to speak. First, Ismail Eletto. Go right ahead, sir.
Good morning, President, councilmembers, staff, and audience. My name is Ismail Eletto, I'm the brother of Joseph Eletto, the Filipino-American postal worker that was gunned down last August. The alleged killer, killer of my brother also shot up the Jewish Community Center at North Valley. The, the incident last summer is, has affected our family greatly. We lost two members of our family last year, my father passing and my brother. It's one thing to lose a loved one like my father from a heart attack, and it's another thing to lose someone like my brother from a hate crime that's senseless and just full of hatred. It leaves you a feeling of emptiness and questions of if we belong in this society. And my answer is yes, we do belong here because we all paid, we've all had our contributions in making this city, this state, this nation, one of the greatest. Our family has come, come up with a statement in memory of my brother, and it's taking the letters of his name, Joseph Eletto, and that's "Join our struggle, educate, prevent hate, instill love, equality, and tolerance for others." As part of that statement, preventing hate, AB 2000 falls in that, because with this legislation, it'll encourage different communities to work together, because together we can win this battle. Like I said before, it took several groups of communities to build this nation into one of the greatest, and it has to take a group of different communities to join together to address this issue. And I strongly recommend that you adopt and support this AB 2000 for the future, for our kids. I have a 10-month-old son that I hope someday he won't have to go through what we're going through again, and I'm sure everyone here in this room has their children, loved ones to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Michael Hirschfeld, I'm the Executive Director of the Jewish Federation's Jewish Community Relations Committee. I'm here today to lend my support and the support of the JCRC to the effort to establish a statewide human relations commission. Following this past weekend's Million Ma March in Washington DC, here in Los Angeles and around the nation, it is obvious that our citizens have said enough to guns, hate, killings, and prejudice. The establishment of a statewide human relations commission, as authored by former Assembly Speaker Viera Gosa, is a logical next step in our effort to know and understand the problem and to develop appropriate and meaningful mechanisms to address hate kinds in our communities. The Jewish Federation and its Community Relations Department wholeheartedly support this motion and urge you to join in advocating for its passage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Najee Ali, Mr. Ali?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council. I'm Najee Ali, Director, Project Islamic Hope. Hope stands for helping oppress people everywhere, and I'm here today, first of all, I want to thank Assembly of the Speaker Emeritus Antonio Viera Gosa for putting this bill proposal forward, and I want to thank City Councilman Mike Fuhrer, bringing it to the attention of the whole City Council. Hate is something that I've lived with all my life, being an African American who grew up in the South early on. My family and members of my family have been abused because of the color of their skin, and even presently, right now, I'm dealing with a situation of blacks and Latinos in the county jail beating each other to death over the color of their skin. So I'm hopeful that this bill will be passed and this commission will be established, because too many times, we've let hate really take over our lives, and it damages everyone, it affects not only the victim, but those that are left behind, the family members, their friends, and their supporters. So I'm hopeful that this bill will be supported by the City Council and this proposal. Thank you for your time, sir, and City Council.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wong?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Wong, I'm the Acting Executive Director of the Asian and Pacific Islanders Councils of the San Fernando Valley. We've been working with a lot of the Asian and Pacific Islanders, and they really do need is the connections that the AB 2000 will be able to provide them information and place to go and at least make their ideas heard, because a lot of times, their ideas are not, or their needs are not heard, and so that a lot of services are not being provided, and that's what, you know, I strongly urge everybody to really look at and support this bill. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Next, I would like to ask Rabbi Meyer May, followed by Joe Hicks.
Good morning, Mr. President, our own City Councilman Mike Fuhrer, councilmembers, and Mr. Speaker Emeritus Antonio Viera Gosa. Ladies and gentlemen, the Wiesenthal Center and the Museum of Tolerance strongly supports AB 2000. As Executive Director of the Wiesenthal Center, I have seen the importance of education, I've seen the importance of training of police, LAPD, the Sheriff's Department, and more than 140 other police agencies around the state of California. We know that to, to play in a symphony orchestra, in a symphonic orchestra, you need different kinds of talent. You need the strings, you need the wind instruments, et cetera. To deal with the plague of hate, which seems at times to permeate the environment in our state and beyond, we require a symphony of effort. The Community Relations Councils of California independently have done an extraordinary job. Some of my colleagues in this area have done outstanding work, but they could do better if they had coordinated intelligence, coordinated activities, if they worked together as a team. And Antonio's, the Speaker's legislation, AB 2000, will go a long way to create that part of the symphony, taking the professionals of human relations and working, and having them work together in coordination with other educational institutions and other educational programs such as ours, the ADLs, et cetera, would be a great value for the state. I urge passage by the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Human Relations Commissioner Joe Hicks?
Thank you very much. I'm appreciative of the chance to be here and indicate the support of the LA City Human Relations Commission for what I think is a very important piece of legislation. First, though, I want to recognize that there is leadership sitting around this horseshoe that has historically been extremely supportive of human relations efforts in this city, and I want to thank you for that history and the continued effort and initiative taken by Councilmember Michael Fuhrer in this particular incident. I want to say, though, that this piece of legislation that would create a statewide office, a statewide commission of human relations, is more than anti-hate legislation. It is important because of that, but it will do far more important things. It will, in fact, help build an infrastructure throughout this state, a consistent message about human relations in this nation's most diverse state. We often have said at the Human Relations Commission that California has become this nation's new Ellis Island, with, and we see it here in the city from a distinct local perspective, and we have come to understand that there are more than 140 different nationalities that are represented here in this city, that there are at least 600 distinct religious traditions that have congregations in this city, that there are more than one-third of this city's residents that come from outside of the United States, and this city has a intermarriage rate five times the national norm. We think that this is a very important effort to build a statewide structure. The City Commission has already taken a position, has been very active in support of this. Our, the County Board of Supervisors has indicated its support throughout this region. Not only has the City Human Relations Commission indicated its support for this legislation, but the County Human Relations Commission, the Orange County Human Relations Commission, the Regional Office of the Justice Department's Community Relations Services, the California Associated Human Relations Organizations, all are supportive of this legislation. I would urge that this, that this City Council also support what I think is a landmark piece of legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The chair would like to thank the following individuals for being here this morning in support of this item. Benjamin Torres of the LA Multicultural Collaborative, Munson Quok Chinese American Citizens Alliance, Steve Koff of the Benai Barith, Nora Ramos of the Asian Pacific American Legal Center, Jeff Rouse, the Director of American Friends of Hebrew University, the American Jewish Committee Council's support of AB 2000, Reverend Campbell, and Reverend Copeland. Thank you all for being here this morning in support of this item. At this time, the chair would like to recognize Councilman Fuhrer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, colleagues, you know, we, we often find ourselves talking or listening to discussion about how diverse our city and our state are, but I think we'd have to agree, if we were to be candid about it, that a lot of that discussion is pretty superficial. That underlying the diversity and the promise of what that could be are some very real issues as to how we relate or don't to each other. Here in the city, we've tried to tackle those issues head-on by elevating our Human Relations Commission to the status of a department and then providing much more resources to that department than formerly was the case, and we've seen some specific actions arise from that. Now we look at what could happen at the state level, because if it's necessary here in Los Angeles, it's necessary times 10 at the state level. Not only should we be focusing on the fact that there are human relations commissions in cities around the state, but the fact is that there's nothing that ties them together. There's no state entity that can build on the best practices that are being put in place in certain of those locations and transmits those practices elsewhere, and really elevates at the state level the importance of human relations in the same way we've done here in Los Angeles. It's time also, I think, as a state matter, not merely as a local matter, that when we deal with issues of human relations, of race, of ethnicity, of sexual orientation, of gender and so forth, that we don't merely address those issues after the fact in a reactive way, waiting for the crisis to emerge, having some transitory discussion about it, and then receding to allow the next crisis to take effect. A statewide human relations commission could put us in a position to have an abiding impact over the long term on how this state evolves on the cutting edge of our nation. Assembly Speaker Emeritus Viera Gosa has introduced AB 2000 to create this commission. It has been, as we've heard, supported by the County of Los Angeles, and I'd urge colleagues that we adopt the recommendation of the Chair of our Governmental Relations Committee, Councilmember Holden, and unanimously adopt our, a resolution in support of AB 2000 by this City Council, so we can take strong action in Sacramento to make sure it happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhrer. Before we go on to the next speaker, I know that we have some students that need to leave who are visiting City Council in the chambers today, and so at this time, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce the fourth grade class of Mrs. Halfrens from Bertlin Middle School of Torrance, who is here visiting with us today, so too the teachers and the parents and the students from Bertlin Middle School. Welcome to the City Council this morning. Welcome to the city council this morning. And also from Towers Elementary School, I believe. And there they are. Welcome to city council. There we go.
Thanks for taking the time.
You're very welcome. You all will be on TV tonight at about quarter to eight on channel 35. There you go. Next speaker, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
I just wanted to, uh, rise because I wasn't unable to get to the, uh, press conference this morning due to a family necessity, but I, I wanted to just extend my, uh, thanks and congratulations to all of you who are not only supporting this, but of course to Speaker Emeritus, uh, Vieragosa for putting together the legislation. Um, I, I don't think much more needs to be said than all of the things that have been said. Uh, good human relations you have to work at and there has to be a plan and it doesn't happen unfortunately overnight. Um, I have a wonderful copy of a billboard, uh, with, uh, two little boys of different races with their arms around each other on my desk and it reminds me that children left to their own devices when they're very young don't seem to have all of these hangups, that we, uh, adults manage to do it, uh, to them, with them and at them. And, uh, maybe if the Human Relations Commission on a statewide could help the adults get their act together, that we could leave the children alone and they would be fine. Um, and I, I just think though, that the idea of having a group that has as its responsibility looking at how we deal with one another, uh, across race, gender, sexuality, ethnic lines, language lines, immigration status, can't do anything but promote, uh, goodwill. And, uh, I congratulate all who've been a part of making this happen and urge a unanimous vote.
As a footnote, Councilwoman, I believe the caption to that photo is "No One Is Born a Bigot," I believe. Uh, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I was able to attend the press conference this morning and I certainly commend, uh, Speaker Emeritus Vieragosa for his forthrightness, for his vision in, uh, pushing this legislation forward. And I certainly hope that the state passes it and I hope that we pass it. One of the things that I said there at the press conference this morning was that as we look about the city and question whether human relations, uh, are needed or good human relations are needed, there have been several, uh, events, uh, in the life of Los Angeles that good human relations would have benefited. Uh, one of those would have been successful school desegregation, which did not occur. And that was due to the absence of good human relations. We talk about the, uh, problems, uh, with our police force that we're dealing with now represents an absence of good human relations. When we look at, uh, what occurred just this past Sunday, two marches against violence and against guns in our society, one in West LA and one downtown. I attended both of them, but the fact that we had both of them seems to me comes from an absence of good relations, good human relations. Another, uh, council members that seems to me to be an absence of good human relations is the establishment, uh, or the way that the committee that the Inspector General has established to investigate the Rampart, uh, situation, which is, uh, so overwhelmingly, uh, comprised of one ethnic group of, uh, one gender, that, uh, it seems to me that that's surely an absence of good human relations. And I would hope that in this council, we would not only urge the passage of, uh, Assembly Speaker, uh, Assembly Speaker Emeritus, uh, Vieragosa's bill, but that we would begin to incorporate that into our daily activities here in the council so that when we come across these situations where good human relations are needed and where good human relations, uh, leadership is required, that we'll be right there on the front lines.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Yes, I also want to rise in support of, um, Assembly Speaker Emeritus Vieragosa's bill. Uh, actually colleagues, when we look at all of the committees and commissions, uh, that have existed for some time in our, uh, grand state of California, one could wonder, uh, why, of course, we should have had this in place some time ago. So, thank you very much, uh, Assembly Member Vieragosa for moving forward on such a good and needed idea. As someone who represents, uh, a part of the city that has seen a totally unacceptable, uh, large increase in the occurrence of hate crimes throughout the San Fernando Valley, uh, as well as throughout the region, but, um, some really notorious ones and many more, uh, we want to see going down, not going up. And I know Mr. Wax has experienced, as I have, uh, some really horrific occurrences in our districts. Um, I wanted to also emphasize the fact that we are, we already have, as Mr. Hicks reminded us, uh, taken leadership roles and actions in the city of Los Angeles, but this is a statewide commission. And certainly, we need to make progress not only in our city, uh, but throughout the state. And I look forward, uh, to seeing how we can continue to improve on learning how to accept the differences and to see them as strengths. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate the assistance in, uh, removing all those distractions that were plaguing me at the point at which I wanted to make an affirmative remark about this important legislative matter. It seems to me that we shouldn't miss any opportunity, uh, to fight, to resist every ounce, every vestige of racial insensitivity, of gender-based discrimination, of disregard for those who are physically disabled or challenged in any of their insidious manifestations. This effort to raise to the level of the state, a commission that will make it its business to focus on such matters in the most forceful and constructive way possible deserves our unanimous support. I simply rise to commend, uh, Mr. Vieragosa, Mr. Fuhr, and the host of those who have been active in pushing forward for not only a better Los Angeles, but a better state of California. We cannot let up. The moment we do, the very things that we thought we had overcome will renew themselves with the kind of force and virulence that we will come to regret. I urge unanimous vote.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Uh, Mr. President, members, I'm very pleased to have seconded this motion, uh, to support the establishment of a human relations commission statewide. I, when it came to my committee, offered an amendment that, uh, we should be mindful of the fact that the state, uh, commission should not preempt the local commission, uh, which is now activated and alive and well. Uh, I can foresee, uh, a situation developing where you wouldn't even know that, uh, a local human relations commission exists, uh, after the Valley Center, Valley Jewish Center incident. So we, whenever they're coming into a local community, I suggested to, to set an incident as a priority. And I said to Mr. Hicks that the, that local community should be informed and take the lead in working with the state commission. Uh, they know the community best. And I think that, uh, that's been offered as an amendment and Mr. Vieragosa is nodding his head affirmatively and I'm sure he'll incorporate that in his language of his, his legislation as it goes forward. It's just a sad situation when we have needed such a commission for years and it took this incident to cause it to happen. We've had a strong human relations commission in the city of Los Angeles and, uh, depends on who's in power at the time, Mr. Vieragosa. Uh, the previous administration defunded the commission and it became deactivated. Uh, the idea was that the kind of human relations commission could assume the responsibility of that of the cities. And you just wonder sometime why we continue to have the problems in our community that we have. Uh, this commission would have an awesome responsibility. I don't know how much authority, because as you can see, the various groups developing, emerging within the state of California and various communities, they're bringing with them the traditions that they have known of generations and generations. And what would be the power and influence and the effect of the commission? By adopting it doesn't mean that all those problems are going to go away. It's a matter of programming and education. You can't force a legislate love and respect. You can only educate and teach in our schools and so on. So therefore, I would hope that the state would, along with its educational programs, have some program adjunct in human relations that would cause one student, one individual, to respect another, to appreciate another. And, uh, then of course, it could be beneficial. Uh, I applaud you once again. I hope you would accept the amendment and, uh, we can go forward and only pray then that it, it'll work for the good of all.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Missakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to join my voice to those who have said thank you and thank you particularly to the people, not only, uh, our former speaker, Mr. Vieragosa, but also the people in the front row. As I look at you, this couple of rows who've come down here to be part of the press conference today and, uh, at our session, you really reflect our Los Angeles family, you really reflect our California family. And I want to particularly, uh, thank Mr. Leto for speaking because out of this terrible tragedy that befell your family, the strength that your family has shown in forging this coalition and forging something good out of something so horrid, um, I think really speaks well of, of what you want to do in memory of your brother. And I also was reflecting, I was surprised, I, I didn't know the statistic that Mr. Hicks gave us, that California or Los Angeles area has five times as many interracial marriages, which is a very positive sign. Uh, my own family has an interracial marriage, uh, where we have a number of Filipinos in my family. And as I saw Mr. Leto standing there, I saw my nephew standing there and realize how close hate crime touches each and all of us and it can. So it must be eliminated, but I also think that what this commission is going to do is not only resist and fight, but also be positive and supportive. And that's the most important thing. As we've found today through all new technology and everything else, networking is the key to strength, to support and to eliminating that that is bad through information, through education and just knowing about each other and joining hands. And you're taking a very, very strong stand today statewide to help enable all of us. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I see no other council colleagues that wish to speak on this item, so at this time, I believe we will vote on the item, item number 30. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 30 and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
That is unanimously approved, forthwith to the mayor for his signature. Thank you, Mr. Speaker Emeritus, and thank you all for participating. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number five called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, item number five called special.
Yes, is there, uh, staff here on this item? I just wanted to get a little idea of how this is going to work. Thank you. Uh, how are the 25 people going to be selected?
Carolyn Cooper with the CAO's office and this is Roberto Mejia with CLA's office. And Fredon Johnson is here from Personnel Department. Uh, we haven't gotten that far in the planning process, but the intent was that the personnel employees in the various departments who are responsible for representing the city in these different hearings, they would be the ones that, uh, would be brought to this training.
Why, I, I noticed in the paragraph above it in the report, uh, on page, uh, two of the report, the third paragraph talks about the city attorney saying that they're willing to provide assistance. Are they going to be a part of the training?
This report, um, what didn't get incorporated into the, um, agenda language was when we were in Budget and Finance Committee, we amended the recommendation to add with the assistance of the city attorney besides the CAO. And for some reason, that language didn't get picked up today.
Okay. Well, this didn't come to Personnel and it probably should have, but I'm not going to fuss over that because it's a good idea. But I, I think the city attorney's office has to be involved because, uh, if we're talking about, uh, people dealing with employees represented by attorneys, I'd prefer to make sure that our attorneys are probably there. And if they aren't there, they at least ought to be training the advocates.
Yeah, we, I was going to say, we, we agree and it was an oversight that didn't get picked up on the release copy, so that was our intent too.
We don't need to go any further. I just didn't see it in the report. They seem to be kind of separate paragraphs, separate entities, and I didn't see the connection. Uh, the other thing I would just say is, um, having, uh, observed people who believe themselves to be amateur attorneys, I would urge also that there be some follow-up with them as they do some of their, uh, presentations because sometimes we tend, those of us who've been amateur attorneys a little here and there, I, I don't know, we, we get a little carried away and I just want to make sure that we have some monitoring by the city attorney's office so that we know that this is being done appropriately.
Right, yeah, we, we will work with them and, and Employee Relations Board is, is very well-versed in, in that type of.
All right, okay. Well, then I won't refer this back to committee. I'll just let this go through today. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I was part of Budget and Finance Committee that heard this case and, uh, had to deal with the results of the, uh, lack of following through on procedures that the city has. And the city paid out a princely sum of money because of this. And the question came up, was the, the city at, um, uh, well-represented in the hearing of this employee that had been recommended, uh, for discipline? And then to find out that the Board of Public Works had overturned the recommendation for discipline was, uh, really, uh, disheartening. And to know that, uh, it was, uh, a regular employee who represented the city's side in that hearing instead of an attorney. And so the question came, uh, couldn't we have attorneys, uh, representing the city's interest in these hearings? Of course, the Board of Public Works is supposed to be representing the city's interests, but in my opinion, uh, they did not, uh, at this point on this, uh, particular case. Uh, and this is something that, the case that it involved that led to this discipline, uh, was something that should have never, never, ever, ever happened, uh, to anybody in this city, let alone the person who was the victim. Um, so I, uh, I don't know, the response of the city attorney is that they're not available to do that? Is that the idea?
Uh, I'm familiar with the situation you're talking about with, which involved an employee in the Bureau of Sanitation and Public Works. And, uh, let me respond in two different ways if, if I may. Um, with that particular situation, it was really almost an aberration. People, um, who were there, uh, apparently the department's advocate was.
Well, I don't, my question was, is the city attorney saying that they cannot, uh, be present, uh, at these hearings? I'm, I don't want to re-argue.
Right, okay.
The ramifications of, uh, the discipline. And we've gone beyond that point unfortunately.
Yeah, the city attorney has basically said that they cannot, they don't have enough staff to, to be present at, uh, those type of hearings or, and actually that wasn't a hearing at that point. They were actually there to get the item continued and my understanding is the board got a little confused. Um, but I know when I.
They were a lot confused if people were asking for a continuation and they absolve the person of the discipline.
Right.
That was. That was a lot confused.
Ms. Walters, I would say that we should not get into this item, that we should just stay on what's in the agenda.
I want to ask the city attorney's office to review this again and look at feasibility, particularly where there are such egregious conditions of being present in these disciplinary hearings.
We will look at this, and we will work with the CAO and the CLA on this.
Please.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other council colleague that would like to speak on item number five? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number five and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item.
Item number eight called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, your questions have been answered. Colleagues, we are now on item number eight. Is there anyone like to speak on item number eight? Seeing no council member who wishes to speak. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number eight and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 27 called special by Councilmember Fuhr.
Mr. Fuhr, item number 27, your questions have been answered. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to, that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 27 and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes, one no.
That item is approved.
Forthwith, please, Mr. President.
Forthwith. Next item.
Item number 29 called special by Councilmember Chick.
Councilwoman Chick, item number 29 called special.
Yeah, and Mr. Zivornich, I've had my questions answered by Housing Department Management, so I have no questions.
Very good. Is there any other council colleague that would like to speak on item number 29? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 29 and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Mr. Pacheco, would you like that one sent forthwith? Forthwith at the request of Councilman Pacheco, item number 29. Next item.
Item number 32 called special.
Item number 32 called special by Mr. Holden, I believe, or Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Ridley Thomas, number 32 special.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Ms. Goldberg has already agreed to take this into committee. I don't think it's necessary to debate the merits or demerits. I just think we should simply assert jurisdiction and refer it to Personnel, and I would so move.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
On 32?
Well, you don't have to speak if you don't want to, Mr. Holden.
No, I didn't do it.
Is it okay?
No, I didn't raise 32.
Well, your button was pushed.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Okay, very good. Let us go forward. We are going to, colleagues, assert jurisdiction on item number 32 and then refer the matter to the Personnel Committee. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll to assert jurisdiction on item number 32 and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Without objection, we will refer this item to the Personnel Committee. Next item.
Item number 34 called special by Councilmember Holden.
There we go. Mr. Holden, item number 34 called special.
I defer before I begin speaking to Mr. Thomas, who's the author, and then I will comment.
Very good. Mr. Ridley Thomas? Mr. Holden has deferred to you in regards to item number 34, in regards to the support of AB 2053, if you could push the button.
Yes, Madam, Mr. President, members of the council, let me just simply say that we have already taken a position pursuant to the work of the Public Safety Committee on this matter of toy guns and the vending issue. Mr. Wesson was a part of our original effort at the 42nd Street School to call attention to everyone that this is a problem. And to the extent that that is the case, he then went forward at the state level to make it more difficult for toy manufacturers to create these look-alikes. The essence of this bill is very narrowly scoped such that we do not have these kinds of problems with the youngsters brandishing weapons that caused them their lives. Since we started on this, Mr. Holden, you'll recall this, and others may as well, Mr. Hernandez, in Monterey Park, there was a kid who had a toy gun, and it ended up being one of the things that we would hope to avoid in terms of the interaction with the police officer and the police officer presumably doing the job thinking it was a weapon, and we have another tragedy. These things happen more frequently than we would like to acknowledge, and one of the ways to correct this is through the efforts that we have taken locally. And in addition to that, the effort that Mr. Wesson has advanced through AB 2053. Mr. Holden, the committee has already dealt with it and prepared to support the committee action and would commend the council to do the same. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Mr. President, members, just for, I concur with Mr. Thomas, as stated, but just for background information, about 12 years ago, a police officer were entering to an open door at an apartment building, and he saw a gun, what he thought was a real weapon, protruding from the inside of the house. He fired and killed the person who had the gun in his hand. The gun was a toy gun. The kid was five or six years old. His mother had walked out of the house for a second, and that was the end of the incident. The city council responded to emotions that I and others introduced and made enough noise about this incident and insisting that it should not ever happen again anywhere in our country. We moved to ban the sale of toy look-alikes, repicle toy guns at that time. We ended up requiring manufacturers to show identification of special illuminated markings on those toy guns to distinguish them from real-like weapons. The law was adopted here in the city of Los Angeles. All of the toy guns that were on the shelves at the time had to be removed, and they were resisting on doing that. The city attorney himself went out to some of the toy stores and required the removal of those toy look-alikes. The state, Mr. Roberti and others, introduced this legislation in the state to cause the same action, and then the federal government. Now, Mr. Wesson discovered one thing that was happening, is that those toy look-alike guns with those neon-type signs affixed to them were being removed, and we were back where we were. So what he's doing is increasing the penalty, increasing the fine for those persons who manufacture, sell, et cetera, those toy look-alikes. What I did in the committee, Mr. President, members, was to ask that a joint resolution on the part of the legislature be introduced, memorializing Congress and the President of the United States to ban the importation because they're importing toy look-alikes, which do not meet the requirements. They could be, obviously being sold here, but they're being imported from other countries. As we deal with the assault weapons, we memorialize Congress, the United States, to ban the importation of assault weapons, AK-47, Oozes, and look-alike. That did go into effect. It did happen after trying time. And we can do the same thing with these toy look-alikes. That's part of the motion of the committee. And Mr. Farrar is back, and he's saying that enough is enough. He's going to vote for it, and my time has run out. Zero left. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item number 34? If not, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 34 and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item.
Item 36 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number 36 called special.
Mr. President, members, I think to do something is better than doing nothing at all. This relates to the incidents with the Amelances, that paramedics are transporting patients in emergency, that they could go by one hospital and go directly to Kaiser. And my concern was about the health and safety of the patient. Hey, will you just keep quiet over here, please? Just order in this place. And we were concerned about the patient's safety and recovery if they went by one hospital to go all the way to Kaiser. And they're still not quiet. But my only concern, Mr. President, members, we should have some kind of investigation because after yesterday, when Mr. Bernsson stated that one of his relatives was taken to another hospital, which was the closest, and nothing was done for that relative, and then until they were transported to the Kaiser Hospital, someone did call me and say that that happened to them as well. Now, I believe that it's like don't ask, don't tell situation, where some hospitals are aware of the fact that Kaiser may not want to reimburse them so they don't provide the health care for some of these people. And I think you're going to need an investigation along those lines. I'm going to vote for it today, but I can tell you that there is an arrangement between the hospitals, and the other hospitals are aware, and I think Mr. Thomas is aware of that too, that Kaiser just do not want to pay a reimbursed hospital for services rendered, so they don't render any services, and that does not help the patient. That was my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Is there any other council member that would like to speak on item number 36? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 36, first reading ordinance, and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Let us send that ordinance forthwith to the mayor for his signature. Next item, Madam Clerk.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Okay, I have one speaker card for public comment. Jerry Pennington, United Tenant Action Council Incorporated. Mr. Pennington?
Yes.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you so very much. My name is Jerry Pennington, and I am Executive Director of the United Tenants Action Council. We were organized in 1974, and we were instrumental in bringing about rent control, working with Councilman Joel Wax. Many of you I am not familiar with, as I have been sick for some years, but now I am back to watch and see that the tenant rights are protected and preserved that we fought so hard for. If you wish to contact us, we are also, and if you want to find out more about our organization, you can contact website, utac.dunet.com. May the 20th is National Tenants Day. We want to remind all of the council persons that this day is coming, and we want you to recognize this day. In 1983, the council awarded us with this, and all the council members signed this, and we're asking you to do the same thing again in declaring National Tenant Day. I'm sure that all of you have tenants in your district, and remember, tenants vote. So we'll be looking forward to seeing you and speaking about Tenants Day. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll be to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wax.
Mr. President, given the lateness of the time, could we just suspend the rules and entertain a motion to declare May 20th National Tenants Day? Then we'll have an appropriate certificate prepared, but I think it would be helpful to do that today so that Mr. Pennington could have that information with him. So I would so move.
Okay. Without objection, let us suspend the rules. In fact, we should vote to suspend the rules so the city clerk...
Yes, and then I'll make the motion.
So the city attorney doesn't throw something at me from her desk over there. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on suspending the rules and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
Would the chair recognize me?
The rules are suspended. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
I move that we declare. What day you want that to be, sir? May 20th is National Tenants Day.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Wax and Councilwoman Goldberg. Anyone like to speak? Seeing no council members that wish to speak. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on declaring May 20th National Tenants Day in the city of Los Angeles and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item. Let's send that forthwith.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's clear the desk.
We have motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
Council has an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Chick requests to be excused to leave at noon on June 16th, and for the meetings of June 20th and 21st, personal business. I need a motion on the excuse for the 16th.
Mr. Padilla moves. Without objection, so ordered.
That clears the desk.
Okay, the desk is clear. We do have two closed-session items, colleagues. That is item number 35 A and B. So the council will now go into closed session. All those persons in the audience who are not involved in the closed session, would you please excuse yourselves? Sergeants, would you prepare the council chambers for closed session? We will go into closed session now. Two items which are before us, number 35 A, which is going to be continued until next Wednesday, which is the 24th of May, I believe. And then we have item number 35 B.
Settlement in the amount of $150,000 in the case of Fiazidal versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 35 B and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, do we have any adjourning motions? Yes, we do. Will the audience please rise? Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Brad King. Many of us have known for years Sandy King, who has been the longtime Executive Director of Jewish Family Services. Brad King is her son, who passed away suddenly, and I'd like us to adjourn, perhaps all members would like to adjourn in memory of Brad King.
All members? Any other colleagues adjourning motions? Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, would you join me in adjourning in memory of Professor C. Eric Lincoln? Professor Lincoln is known to many of us as the foremost scholar of African-American religious life. He wrote a groundbreaking text on the subject. He taught at several institutions, including Brown University of Ghana, before joining the faculty at Duke. And that was in 1976. Throughout his career, he wrote not only extensively but exhaustively about the impact of race and everyday life. Broader than the question of race, he is one of the nation's preeminent sociologists of religion. His work has made its contribution significantly known in the form of a number of scholars who cite him as the primary source on many of these subjects. He is survived by his wife and therefore children.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. The chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
Yes, and I'd like the council to adjourn in memory of Professor Fred Case. He was a longtime professor at UCLA, Urban Studies, Real Estate, Housing Policies, and served in the city as both a Planning Commissioner and a Building and Safety Commissioner, and brought his expertise from the university to a voluntary service in the city. And he'll be remembered for his many contributions. And did the council adjourn in memory of Harry Volk, former head of Union Bank and a longtime philanthropist and leader in cultural and philanthropic endeavors in the city? And I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
Councilwoman Goldberg.
Seconder on Mr. Ridley Thomas.
I would like to adjourn in memory of Harry Canister, who passed away on Sunday.
He was an 82-year resident of San Pedro and was the owner of Canister's Men's Wear and was a 25-year member of the Board of Directors of the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club and a charter member of the Sea Lions. He is survived by his wife Ruth, sons Lance and Joel, and four grandchildren. Also that we adjourn in memory of Mamie Bradley Hussy, who passed away on Mother's Day. She was 98 years old and is survived by six children... She was 98 years old and is survived by six children, many great-grandchildren, one of her children being Jim Hussey, who is very prominent in the San Pedro community, being a member or the chair of many community advisory committees over the past many years.
Mr. President? I'd like to also be a seconder on the adjourning motion for Dr. Case. He was a professor in the Anderson School of Management when I was a student there.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Thank you. Being no further business before the city council, the council is adjourned.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, your city, your channel.